I thought if we did a round of 10 minutes and then a round of five minutes, that would give sort of adequate and equal time to everyone. So I guess we'll begin with CR 99. With us, we have-
Excuse me, Vice Chair, would you like to call roll, please?
Sure, sure. Just a reminder, I am Vice Chair, so that makes me a substitute. And we all know it's a little different in class when the substitute's there. So, bring out the TV cart. Councilmember Youngman.
Here.
Councilmember Young.
Here.
Councilmember Walsh.
I'm here.
Awesome. We also have Amy Gowen, Jeff Bronow, Tim Rogers, and Vicky Cutroneo with us as well. Yeah, Vicky, would you just want to come up to the table because then you don't have to go back and- It's just easier to have access to the microphone that way, so I completely understand. So who would like to begin their round of 10? Mr. Youngman?
So I only have a couple of questions on the allocations and hopefully we'll get through those quicker and we can use it to talk about the second topic. I guess this is a question for Jeff. When's the last time all the allocations available in a year were used?
Mr. Bronow, we cannot hear you. Are you muted?
Sorry about that. Thank you very much. I think it's been seven years. So including this current allocation year, there's been seven years where not- There's no- there's been no housing units that have gone into waiting bin for allocations.
Okay. And then, I don't know who takes this question. Is this kind of the same type of chart we're going to see in the new general plan? Or is this going to change? I know we're looking at classifying areas and communities a little differently. Can you just give us two or three minutes on how that's going to change after the new general plan?
We know, you know, it's going to have to change because this chart is based on the land use map in Plann Howard 2030, which has the four different place types, established communities, and program visualization, et cetera. So all of that is premised on the Plann Howard 2040 projections, those land use categories. So as you're aware, we're transitioning to a much more extensive and character-based future land use map with all the different character areas. So the housing allocations will have to transition as well. We don't yet have categories established. That's something that we're still going to work on. But we do plan, that will all be available when the graph gets released.
And then, we had talked a little bit about, you know, whether it was the geographic areas or the character areas, trying to also overlay those somehow into the planning areas that the school system uses, so there could be some coordination. Like you might have a breakdown of allocations, but senior to that would be what's happening in that school planning region. And my understanding is we couldn't get that aligned with the school system as far as, you know, kind of aligning our planning areas with them. Am I remembering that right?
Yeah, yeah. There's quite a long history with that. Initially, when APFO was first adopted back in 1992, that was the intent. And that's actually what happened, where the elementary school regions, and it only was elementary schools because of course, elementary schools have different districts than middle schools and different districts, now high schools. But there's the six elementary regions and the allocation areas were the same as the six school regions. And that happened back in 1992. And then the experience was thereafter that that didn't really work so well because every time there was a school redistricting where the boundaries changed and the general plan had these fixed allocation areas, then it was a mismatch. So it had been an issue for a while. And so then when the 2000 Plan was adopted, that's when we moved the planning areas. And then the planning areas were fixed. And then the school regions had their own regions. And then when the 2010 Plan or 2012 Plan was adopted, you know, the current plan, Plann Howard 2030, that's when it went to those designated place types because it aligned with the plan at that time. And then I know this question has come up since then, right? Why don't the two areas realign? And the, if you, it really doesn't matter all that too much because the projections that we provide to the school system are detailed down to the parcel level. So all of the projections actually fit into their school districts very well, even though the allocations don't necessarily line up. The projections that they receive are part of their projection estimates. So the projection estimates for the schools in terms of new construction aren't based on the allocation areas. They're based on actual housing unit data down to the parcel level that fits well into their own planning polygons. So the, and then as you, as we talked about before, just your first question, it's been seven years since the total allocations have been even granted. There's a, the growth is really slowing. And so there's only been, you know, I have sort of the history of allocations. You know, this last year, there was 700. Previous years, they were in the 500 to 600 range. So the allocations in recent times have less importance than it used to have back when growth was really strong in the 1990s. But in any event, we, all the projections we have, we give to the school system that fits into their planning areas because it is at the parcel level. I don't know if that helps.
No, it does. I think just to close it out before I pass the baton, you know, we had talked about, and kind of this perfect world, I being a Realtor, so I see it kind of on the front end, you know, somebody's moving in, right? And, you know, we deal with it also during redistricting. And I think that one of the issues is people move here from Pennsylvania, New Jersey, places that have these township-type school districts, right? So they're smaller. And it's easier to plan. When you redistrict, you're going from that elementary school to that elementary school, you know, that's, you know, the same distance from your house kind of thing. And it was to try to create these smaller areas within this big county where, you know, you moved into that area, you built a house in that area, you allocated housing allocations in that area, the school invested money in that area for capacity, whatever it was, it was kind of in these tighter areas that would almost operate separately when it came to all this utilization and development planning. And I guess the issue is that the school system, they want to be able to move in and out of those areas. You know, when it comes to, when it comes to, I guess, redistricting and things. Like it's, they couldn't commit to staying within that smaller, more restrictive area. But, okay. Well, that's all I have. So I'll pass on.
Ms. Young or Ms. Walsh? Or I can go if- Okay.
I can't see you guys. Following up on Mr. Youngman's point, you know, I get that it cannot be perfectly aligned, this notion of schools planning by their own region. And the Department of Planning and Zoning using its, what, five areas, planning areas? But there is 0% possibility of us getting it right if there is 0% overlap between what the schools are using for planning and what we're using for planning. I hope we're all starting from the premise, and that's why I think we want to spend more time on the second of these two resolutions, that what we're doing now does not work. Whatever information that we're giving to the schools, and we being the Department of Planning and Zoning, is not, in combination with the schools themselves are using or what we're giving them, is not resulting in a system that worked. And I can say that authoritatively from a district like District One, where we don't have a high school presently. And the largest, as I see it, development coming in is in District One, an apartment project that's on the Robert's property, that his council approved. That, there is a disconnect. There is a problem. And I think until we understand what the root of that problem is, it's real hard for those of us who are intent on fixing it to fix it. So I understand why the disconnect happened. I have no understanding of why we are not aiming to at least get closer to a connection rather than throws our hands up in the air and say, "Well, it can't be done. There's no way to do it." Our APFO code as is requires us to plan for school's capacity and have some appreciation for it. And right now, that link isn't already built. We've had this conversation for years in a row. I do not wish to delay, right? What I do want to talk about, which is totally different than that, is what categories of housing we're allocating in this resolution? And so we have things like single-family detached, single-family detached. Why do we not allocate and set limits or targets, or whichever way you want to call it, different ranges of affordable housing and also 55-plus? Why aren't those two categories of housing included in our allocation consideration and should maybe?
Yeah, well, there actually used to be a set aside for age-restricted housing. So there used to be a 250-unit set aside for age-restricted. So that, that could happen. I mean, that could be when we adopt the new general plan, we set up a set aside for age-restricted housing. For modern income housing units, all projects right now require a certain percentage of affordable housing, you know, 10% to 15%, maybe even 20%, depending on the zone. And so those are included in the allocations. And there was an APFO amendment recently, I think with the last task force, where they exempted M.I.H.U. units in order to try to incentivize those types of units being built. So those are also sort of in, you know, there's not a separate set aside, but they're incorporated into the APFO system, I would say.
Where could I find information that would validate that assumption? That says that 10% to 15% of the housing bill in each of the DPC planning areas have or are affordable housing? Is that term is defined in our code?
So we have, we, when a subdivision comes in and if it's required to have a certain percentage of affordable units, we track that. And the subdivision of the site plan that gets approved and signed indicates how many moderate-income housing units are required to be built as part of that project. So we have that data. As far as built on the ground, the Department of Housing and Community Development has a comprehensive list of where all of those are. The reason it's a little bit difficult for us to maintain that, and they're the better source, is because of this fee-in lieu concept, where sometimes there's a fee-in lieu and they take the fee-in lieu and they build their own in locations. So they have a better, you know, they have a better tracking of the actual moderate-income housing units. If you wanted to get a comprehensive list today, you know, by planning your area.
But that's not something that's in like the annual development monitoring, whatever that reported, is the event?
Yeah, it is in there, actually. So we do, in that annual report, we have a tracking of moderate-income housing units that have been approved in subdivision plans and also in process.
Okay, but you're not concerned, but the point that you're making is that that's on the development approval side? So that just simply because DPC is assuming that this number of housing units will be built in affordably, that that may not actually obtain, given what the Department of Housing and Community Development permits as an exemption after the fact?
Well, no, there's not an exemption. So what we track is, actually gets built. Because if you have a signed site plan and it says you need to build 10% onsite, you know, 10 M.I.H.U.s out of 100, they have to be built onsite and they will be there. If a project is a fee-in lieu, for example, a single-family detached project, often cases, I believe that the Housing Department grants a fee-in lieu. So the developer would pay a fee-in lieu money, you know, $20,000 or something like that per unit, that goes directly to the Housing and Community Development Department. And then they take that money to build affordable housing somewhere else. Or they might, they might use it for rent subsidies and things of that nature.
Okay, but so what, does DPC have a tool that it uses to say, "Oh hey, we know that 10% to 15% of the housing stuff built in each of these planning areas is affordable"?
Well, yeah, we do. We have it in our database of what plans are approved, where in the county. So we're able to track exactly where these M.I.H.U.s are.
Again, I just want to clarify that I don't, the requirement isn't that 10% to 15% per planning area be affordable. It's per zoning district.
Right, right.
So it's a certain zoning district that, as you know, that imposed somewhere between a 10% and 20% M.I.H.U. requirement. But that's, it's not done by planning area. It's just done by zoning district.
Right, but I'm asking, I mean, there's no, if I just wrote council district, right? If I add like a third geographic bound into the mess that is what we do, I'd say government. 10%, I don't think we're, I mean, are we building 10% or 15% in D1? Are we building 10% or 15% in D4? Is it uniform across the five council districts? And I'm happy to hear the answer is, I can't tell you that answer, Liz, because we track it on X.
Right.
If X is the DPC planning area, which I would think it is because the Department of Planning and Zoning uses planning areas, then again, what assurance do we have? And where could one validate the assumption that that housing is getting actually built and distributed uniformly across our county in all of these planning areas? Where will we do that? So if I said, okay, in the Elkridge planning area, what percentage of affordable housing units was permitted left? How do we know that what we aim to do, I think, as policymakers and, you know, people who enforce the code as it stands in our books, how do we know that we're actually doing that? And then that gets back to my original question, which is, I think, and that's why I asked it, we need a little push. Like what if we had a criteria that said, "These are your allocations in these planning areas because this whole established community, blah, blah", that's like a whole other complete disconnect from any kind of geographic plan. But if in this, whatever bound we're going to create, if you have not provided that, assume 10% or 15% or whatever the mean value is worked out of affordable housing in here, then no go. No more for-profit housing until we satisfy the affordable component. Could we do something like that that would ensure that we're getting that uniform distribution as new development comes in?
But I think as Amy said, it's, the way it works is by zoning. And so the intent is, of course, to try to not concentrate affordable housing in certain places and just spread it out, right? But that obviously depends on where the available land is. Where is the available land in order to build affordable housing? If it's based on zoning, then it has to be affordable within wherever the zone is. So it could end up being that Elkridge, for example, might have a little bit more affordable housing because it has, that includes a rural corridor, so there's high-density zones there. So that's, you know, so the intent is to not concentrate it, but we do have that data. So we could, we could work with the Department of Housing and Community Development to get a list of all of the existing built affordable housing in the county by address. And then we can put it together any way we want, by planning area, by council district, to see how it's currently working, you know, at the present time. So that is possible to have that data. We have that information.
All right, great. All right, thanks. Ms. Bronow, we'll follow up with you on that.
Okay.
Ms. Young, did you want to weigh in on CR 99? Okay. So actually, I'm going to sort of stay on the same tack that Ms. Walsh was going on, Mr. Bronow. And really talk about some of the unit types. And when we did the school facility surcharge, one of the things that we looked at was children coming from housing type. And is that something that you guys track? Do we know sort of what numbers of children are being produced by what types of units?
Yeah, so the Howard County Public School System tracks that and has that information because they know where the students are.
Okay.
So that's part of their projection model, too. Estimated yields of students from apartments compared to townhomes compared to single-family detached. Typically less in apartments, more in townhomes, and more in single-family detached because the bedroom, number of bedrooms increased typically. So that is tracked and updated every year. You know, Tim could probably speak to that much better than I could.
Okay. Mr. Rogers, if I were looking for that chart, sort of year by year, where could I look for that?
Good afternoon. We don't, so we don't publish a chart that shows year over year students yielded from different types of housing units. We do incorporate that information into our projection methodology. And accompanying the Attica Public Facilities ordinance school capacity chart, we do provide the, let's see, we included it as number three, attachment three, I believe, that shows for the projected enrollment for the next year, what we anticipate the yield being from different types of housing transactions.
Is that the resale versus new construction aspect? Sorry, I'm scrolling down.
Yeah, sure, yeah. So it shows for each school, so for the elementary school chart, for instance, it shows, lists the schools down the left side and then identifies the official enrollment, the projected enrollment for the next year, the projected enrollment change, and then the amount of that change that we expect to be attributable to each of these factors, each of those housing factors. And that's, it's structured that way specifically to meet the requirements of the APFO law.
Okay. If you're able to send over some of that data to us, that would be really helpful because I think that my ultimate concern is along those lines of unit type. Because, you know, Mr. Bronow, can you build anything other than a single-family detached home in R20? Like in terms of residential housing?
I don't, I'm not the zoning expert. I don't believe so. Amy, could I ask further?
Sure, just like standard market rate.
Generally, it's, I think you can build townhomes actually in R20 in certain cases.
Okay.
No, not in R20, but-
I didn't think-
I think you can in R-E-D.
Yes, you can. I think you can do it in just-
R-E-D, that's right.
Yeah, R-E-D, but you can't do it in R20.
Can't do it in RR or R20. So if you want to build housing in those zones, you cannot create anything other than a single-family detached home. So even when you're paying that assessment on these moderate-income housing units, you're not allowed to take a third of those lots and create more affordable housing types and do that onsite and actually integrate that community as it's being developed with different housing types. We don't currently allow that, correct?
That's correct. And I think from a feasibility analysis, it's prohibitive build in our current economy, affordable, single-family detached homes.
Right, like the market doesn't-
That's why, yeah, that's why typically, in most cases, all single-family home developments pay fee-in lieu instead.
Right, and they're also in quite large, single-family detached homes. So it's, while the intent might not be to concentrate poverty, we block housing types that would de-concentrate poverty. So the zoning blocks it and the market incentivizes these massive, single-family detached homes that end up sending more kids to overcrowded school districts. So I think there's a way that we can actually find a balance, but it's got to come more in this missing middle aspect. So I'm wondering about the next general plan with this housing allocation chart, similar to Mr. Youngman and also Ms. Walsh. Because can we do allocation charts by housing type? Could we then say we want accessible, say we had a quad where the units on the bottom are accessible, able to age in place? You know, we could put those, quads as, or missing middle, or however you want. Whatever the need in missing housing type is, we could incentivize that and disincentivize our single-family detached homes that are sending so many children to the schools. It just feels like we have this system that is incentivizing the housing type that sends the most children to our schools. And sure, it's the biggest profits for the builder, but my concern is that it's, you know, it's sending the most children to our schools. And there's got to be a better way to do this where we can meet the housing needs of our community. We're not having 75% of our community commuting in. So we can reduce traffic if people live here and work here. And most importantly, for this discussion, we could help reduce the number of children going to the school system.
Yeah, and I think that concept actually came up with the last APFO task force. And there was quite a bit of discussion on that. One of the thoughts was to give out allocations by housing unit type.
Okay.
You know, like by apartments, that kind of thing. So that concept certainly has been talked about in the past and could be, could be something I would think that the next task force would certainly want to look at. One thing that's keep in mind is that the next, you know, as you know, HOCO by design really is a redevelopment plan. So there's not a lot of land left for single-family detached. So these big, these big developments with maybe that might even allow 25 even, 25 or greater are just, they don't exist very much anymore in Howard County. So I think what's happened the last 20 years in single-family detached, the future's not going to be anything like that. And the future's really going to be redevelopment, higher-density mixed-use communities.
Yeah, and to piggyback on that is that, you know, the growth is being targeted in the activity centers in HOCO by design. So I think in essence, you're doing some of that if you are, let's say, providing additional allocations or incentives to development in activity center versus somewhere else, right? And we're-
To help focus where we want them to go.
Big middle housing in the activity centers, right? And then, you know, that then is also, you know, when we say with HOCO by design, it is intended to be more predictable. And it puts kind of everyone on notice that this is where the county is anticipating future growth is going to occur, the majority of it.
Right, so we don't have this sort of trickle fire hose that we have now. It's a bit more planned.
Correct. And like Jeff said, a lot of undeveloped outside of there.
And then the question I have for Mr. Bronow, in your discussion with Mr. Youngman, so it sounds like the allocations were more important as a tool in the 90s. But were the allocations then a precursor to APFO?
Yeah, they were definitely more important in the 90s and even through the 2000s, you know, even through probably 2012, 13, 14, just more recently that they haven't been as important. And so, yeah, that was the original concept of APFO. You know, back in the late 80s, there was upwards of 3,000 or more housing units being built per year. So the allocation concept was put together to say, "Look, we want to reduce that to, you know, something like 1,800 or 2,000 units per year." And that's sort of divided amongst, you know, spread it out in the county and the different regions. And then once in a certain region, if the certain number exceeded a cap, we'd hold it and put them in a waiting bin until the next year.
And then APFO kind of slows it down in a different way. So that makes the allocations a lot less important. Because it's not necessarily that growth has just naturally slowed. It's that we've sort of turned the tap to slow it down.
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's, so when you say APFO, you mean like the school capacity chart?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
We close the regions. We slow the growth by making it wait longer. And there is an impact of slowing it, maybe not to certain people's standards, but there is certainly a cause and effect there. And that cause and effect is what has slowed, which is what has made the allocations less important as a tool.
Yeah, I think so. And then, so the other, the question is, what is causing this recent slowdown? Is it because in 2019, the APFO change to add the high school test, reduced the capacity utilization when elementary schools are closed to development from 115 to 110, and redistricting the middle schools from 115, actually 115 to 105, middle schools, 115 to 110, so a lot more schools were closed? So the question is, because all these school districts are closed, is that therefore the development is slowing because they don't want to start the development process and then have to wait four years? Is that the major cause? Or is the cause related to the economy in general with perhaps the COVID? And also perhaps the reduction of available land? I think it's all three.
Okay.
I think it's, you know, all three of those things. And in particular, I think there's just not a lot of land available left for new development. So that, that might have also a big part to do with-
That'll slow it down as well.
Yeah, if you talk to developers- Yeah, if you talk to developers, you know, they will tell you both, I think, that there's just not a lot of opportunity left. All the easy stuff to develop is sort of done with. Now is the redevelopment things, which are a lot more difficult to do with land assembly, and, and you have to have agreements with current landowners. And there's an existing use that may be fine right now. It's just a question of when that turns over. So I think it's a combination of limited land supply and the stricter school capacity test.
Thank you. I was, I was really hoping you were going to give me the, your opinion on what the, what the cause and effect were. So I appreciate that. So now we are moving on to. Oh, okay. Ms. Young?
I just have one question, and it's directed to Director Gowan. And that is, we've got this housing allocation chart, but we also have the impending general plan. And I was wondering, when do you think that general plan will come before us? As there was some, I believe, discussion that the, that this housing allocation chart could easily change depending on the general plan.
Yeah, so we have a couple, well, as you know, we've been releasing kind of chapter by chapter, the different planning themes. We released dynamic neighborhoods, quality by design, and life outdoors. And then, in probably late summer, early fall, we have two more chapters to re, to release, which is county in motion and economic prosperity. And then after that, we'll be, at some point, releasing the draft plan. So I would anticipate probably late fall, early winter for the entire draft plan. And then, of course, it'll go out for public comment. We'll, you know, put it out there for public comment first. We'll go to the planning board. So the council probably wouldn't see that until sometime early 2023.
So when do you anticipate then that the housing allocation chart would actually end up being changed?
It, so it would be part of the draft plan that, that I had mentioned would be available late, late fall or late winter.
Thank you.
So then we would have something out there for the public to comment on at that time. But ultimately, that, that ultimately gets adopted. It's part of the general plan, as, I'm sure you know that. So that would be, you know, the council would review that in, in the context of the entire general plan.
The, the types, the region chart, how we do it now, essentially, what those categories are for the housing allocation chart would be part of the category adoption.
Part of the general plan.
Ms. Young, did you want to kick off CR99?
Yeah, I'll let you.
Good. Mr. Youngman, Ms. Walsh?
I don't, I don't mind starting.
Sure.
So I've got the feasibility study and the open-closed, or, you know, the charts that, that look the same in the feasibility study and the open-closed charts that we have before us today. And they don't foot. And I know that they're done at, you know, different times of the year, but they're pretty significantly different. Can anybody speak to that? And I'm just looking at the 2025, 2026 year right now.
Sure. Mr. Youngman, which feasibility study are you looking at?
2022 feasibility study. So, you know, like the easiest place, go ahead.
So that's going to be your, the major difference is the, the 2022 feasibility study is based on a projection from 2022. We developed that projection over the winter and spring and released it in the feasibility study in 2022. The school capacity chart that you're reviewing, considering today, is based on enrollment projection developed spring, or winter and spring 2021, and then subject to the, the entire next year's capacity planning and capital planning cycle. So they're two different projections.
Right, okay.
That's the difference.
But they're supposed to kind of tell us the same thing, right? And so the, so the open-closed chart that we're going to vote on in two weeks is based on assumptions that are a year old?
Uh, yeah, well, more or less. They're, they're, again, from the projection that was developed in 2021, presented in the 2021 feasibility study, and then informed the capital planning cycle that began that, that year, and then just was finalized in the adoption of the capital budget, which just occurred.
Why aren't we voting on something that's based on data that's not a year old? I mean, and, and remember why we're doing this. We're trying to balance two sort of conflicting things, right? One is, we're, we're, we're taking away, or at least substantially restricting someone's ability to lawfully develop the property that they own, that they're paying taxes on and, and all. And at the same time, and we're doing that because we don't want overcrowded schools. But when I see a feasibility study where the, where the most recent current numbers show a lot less kids in these schools than we're about to base closing schools on because we're using a year, a year-old data, like, doesn't make sense to me.
If I may.
Yeah, right.
Go ahead, Mr. Rogers.
Go ahead, Becky.
Well, you're probably going to refer.
I feel like I remember sitting in the audience here like five years ago while Jen was asking this exact same question. And here we are, still.
I, and Mr. Rogers can correct me if I'm wrong. I think it's along the lines of the timing of your approval of this. And I know that we've had this discussion, like the, the whole timing of the approval of the ApFO chart and the open-closed chart, and when that happens during the county council. I know we've had this conversation many times, and looking for ways to improve the process and to, so that we can use the most recent data possible. And where does that line up between the county council and the school system? Mr. Rogers, can you speak to that?
Sure. Thanks, Ms. Catronio. The, the main reason that it is the way it is, is to allow for an entire year's capital planning cycle to happen and be culminated in the adoption of this chart. So the chart represents enrollment projection that has been able to inform an entire year's capital planning cycle. So that projection informed the feasibility study from June 21. That feasibility study recommended capacity projects to address redistricting, those recommendations, or not address redistricting, address crowding. Those recommendations fed into the capital budget, which was reviewed over the fall and winter, and then just, you know, the board requested was earlier this spring, and then the approval came just recently, in the last month or so. So those capacities are then included in the chart that you have before you. If it occurs at a different time of the year, that just means a different, different timing, different data that's able to be used. And to be honest, you know, I'm glad you asked this question first, Mr. Youngman. I, you know, if the county council would like to request a chart reflecting different data sets or different timing from the Board of Ed, you know, I think we can talk through that. But I, the way that it is done now follows the annual planning, capital planning cycle that begins with a projection through the feasibility study and through the capital budget approval process.
Well, I, I, I appreciate that. I, I, I guess maybe I'm just naive, or, but, but I'm, I think we should take 20, 2025 to 2026, out whatever you're required to do, eight years, 10 years, from this feasibility study, put it in this open-closed chart, and that's what we should be voting on. Because that includes the capacity projects, it, it's based on more recent data. It, it just seems totally illogical to vote to close schools that in the feasibility study, which is the most current data, are open. Like, how, like, how do you, how do we look at somebody who's impacted by that with a straight face? And, and say, well, we had to because the school's overcrowded, but yet, we're looking at feasibility study that shows that it's not. So I, I just, and I know that you're, you're kind of new to this, and you're bound by kind of how we've been doing this for so long, but it's, that's, that's a frustrating situation. Do I, do I still have a little more time, or do we, did I eat up my time? I don't mind punting if I need to.
I think we're just going to go back around.
Okay.
I would finish your time, and then we'll go back.
Okay. Because, because like some, some that, that jumped out at me are like pointers run, for instance. I mean, pointers run in the, in the open-closed chart is, is going to be closed at supposedly 115%, but in the feasibility study is at 103. You know, and I, and, you know, I mean, it's not like, there's 40 examples of that, but, you know, there's, there's three or four elementary school examples. I didn't have time to get to middle school and high school. So I, I guess I'll ask one more question, and then I'll hand off. So where did we end up on trying to develop this sort of life cycle model? You know, we, we know that we've, we, we continue to have this debate of, you know, how do you account for kids from, students from new development? I mean, to say it's only kids that show up at school within the first year of that house being built is obviously not right, because if they show up the second or third year, that's because we built that house. But yet, 10 years later, it's, you know, it's kind of hard to make that argument because of new development. So we talked about this life cycle model where we know based on data, if I build 50 single-family homes in an R20 district, I'm going to get X number of kids, you know, that's going to be maybe some early on, when the neighborhood's first sold, that's going to really grow for the fir, you know, next 10, 15 years, and then it's going to tail off as you have the neighborhood hasn't turned over yet. Are we making any progress at all on sort of replacing this archaic system with that more detailed way of looking at how this, how it works in reality?
If I may, I'd like to go first on this. And I think it's been a misnomer that a number that's been, that is used for the open-closed chart and for the impact of new construction is a number that's just for that year. And then that's given the, the tagline that that's the impact of the new construction, when in reality, that's not the cumulative impact of that development. And that is something I believe the council should be asking for, and that the school system should be reporting, the actual cumulative impact. This is, just like the development monitoring report, that details, I think it's over 20 units. It has a minimum number, what they call a high density. What is the impact of that, of those developments that are listed in the development monitoring report over the past five years? I think that would give council a lot more information on the impact of development, especially as we go into the next general plan, and we're looking at more high density and, as our, as our focus of development. So I think that that is something, you talk about life cycle, but really, and it's different parts of the county where those, there's different impacts. For example, in the northern part of the county, that feeds into Marriott's Ridge and Centennial, apartments have a lot more kids coming out of them.
Right.
Or apartments that are more affordable have a lot more kids coming out of them than, and, you know, an apartment is not an apartment equally across the county, or even a single-family attached. So I think looking specifically at developments, the name of the development, the cumulative year by year, at each school level, elementary, middle, and high school, what is the cumulative number of students coming from that development? And that will give you far more information than what you're getting from, from their current reports.
Because how, how do you account for the kids that, you know, again, I always talk about, you know, when I moved in, I had zero kids in school, and then three or four years, five years later, I had two kids in, in a school. Well, I'm no longer new construction, even though the thing that brought me there five years earlier was new construction. It's, it's not going in the resale bucket because I didn't sell my house. How, how are, how's that being predicted in these younger neighborhoods? I guess that's a timid question.
Yeah, that's timid.
Yeah.
Sure. So the, the, the main portion of our projection on a school, a school level is, is cohort survival rates. So that's, that's the grade, that's the survival rates or the progression rates of, from grade to grade. So if you move into your home and you stay at that school, or your, your child stays at that school, they're included in that, that rate of students moving from first to second, second to third, and on through that level of school. And that's the biggest portion of any school's projected enrollment for future years. And with regard to the housing piece, we're looking on an annual basis, on a school-by-school basis, at students who arrive new to each school from new construction, so that's their, their family is the first occupants of that home. We're also looking at annually, school-by-school, at students who arrive new to that school because their family moved into a home that was constructed while they were a pre-school age. We're also looking, again, annually, school-by-school, at the students who arrive new to their school from resale of an existing home, and also from turnover of apartments. So we're categorizing students on an annual basis who are new to their school from each of those categories, and putting those on top of the birth expected, the birth projections and the cohort survival rates. So there's no, there's really no housing transaction that's being missed here in terms of calculating the projection. It's just possibly, it sounds like the way that it's being communicated with the county council in reporting.
Well, okay, so I get that we know how many, you know, it's easy to predict once the kids are in kindergarten, because, you know, they're going to matriculate up, and then in fifth grade, they're going to move out. But you guys do have a way of figuring out how many two- and three-year-olds are in a newly constructed neighborhood that aren't going to be counted as student yield from new construction, because it's going to be a few years out. But like, you have predictive models on when those kids are going to show up for kindergarten?
Yes, it's based on the historical rates from that school district.
Okay. And then, so when I'm looking at the, the table that, that you guys provided through the auditor, this June 2022 enrollment versus the projection, and you're breaking it down, apartment turnover, resale, new construction, other factors, all the stuff we're talking about now is in that other factors?
The cohorts, changes in cohort survival rate, changes in birth cohorts and, and birth projections, different cohorts. So, you know, a lot of schools will have a much larger fifth-grade cohort that moves on to middle school than is replaced by the, the kindergarten cohort that moves into the school. So, yeah, these, these other factors are the types of things that go into that, again, the other factors category.
Okay. I know I've taken way more than 10.
Just looked, and we're at like 15. So why don't we just do, we can do 15 for the next. Ms. Walsh, or Ms. Young, would you like to go?
I'm happy to ask some questions here.
Okay.
I would like to move on to the pre-K situation, because I, I think that that has some, or could have some major ramifications to this capacity chart. And I'm, I'm concerned that none of these pre-K projections that are required by Kerwin are, are reflected in these capacity charts. Could you comment on that, Mr. Rogers? And I'd also like Ms. Catronio to discuss this a little bit.
So the requirements of the blueprint for Maryland, Maryland's schools are not all, are not all required to be right away. We're working on a way to project or estimate kindergarten enrollment, since, or not kindergarten, pre-K enrollment, since we, the current pre-K environment is not the same as the, that prescribed by the blueprint legislation. We don't have a reliable data set to use for generating historical averages to use to predict the future. So what we're doing is working with some estimates, along with those who manage these early childhood programs in the school system, and we're using those numbers to plan the need for seats as we go forward over this multi-year implementation.
Okay, so I believe in our budget process that there was the possibility. Okay, so um, I believe i- in our budget process that there was the possibility, or or somebody mentioned that there was potential for four thousand pre-K students to enroll in our public schools. And I'm not sure when we need to start planning for that, but it does seem that it is going to be in the fairly immediate future, and that this should, that that the school district should start putting these projections in their chart, so that we can start planning for physical space for these students. We we don't, we're not a a school district that has extra capacity laying around. Um, Ms. Catrino?
Yeah, I I agree. I think now that it's become a mandate, um, and more um, formal, that we should, much like we have capacity in our CIP, that we should be um, showing that in our pre-K projections and have it just more formalized for the county council so that you have an idea. Yeah, four thousand seats is the number that Dr. Walker, I think, but um, and there's, we don't have fourth uh, capacity for four thousand pre-K seats. So I think that um, going forward, as Mr. Rogers said, we are starting to get more information. Um, right now, it's really hard to predict cuz we're right at the beginning, but as we go forward, I do believe that we should ha- we should account for pre-K, much like we're accounting for our regular enrollment, um, in our, you know, hat number of seats, projected number of seats, just like we do K through twelve. Um, if not for anything but for your the council's information, so that you can visualize it and see it, um, our needs. I mean, the pre-K needs are are impacting our ability to provide capacity, cuz we gotta give somewhere. Um, and if we have to have all these seats for pre-K, then that really does impact our CIP, you know, from the very from the very basics. So um, I do believe that there is a different way to do this, and and we can certainly work together towards um, having a um, a living document that provides more information for you.
I think I I agree. And it doesn't have to mean that the schools are open or closed this coming year, because we know it's not a mandate, but we could at least um, predict that we're going to need a hundred seats at this school, or two hundred seats at this school. Well, hopefully, there's not that many two to three, two to four-year-olds, actually, but we don't know. I mean, some some areas of the county, there might be a lot more pre-K kids than we anticipate. And again, we don't know how many there are. I I don't know even how we got to that four thousand number. Uh, is there, what was the, do we know what
Yeah.
basis was for the four thousand number?
Ms. Young, I I could be, I don't know all the details on 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 all the planning for pre-K. There are a lot of a lot of offices and folks involved in this, but um, I believe the four thousand was a high-end estimate over the entire implementation. So at some point in the future, once all the requirements are met, we may be serving uh, four thousand uh, early childhood students. And it's also my understanding that a portion of that is supposed to be uh, accommodated using season with private providers. So it, I, there's not an expectation that the public school system uh, will be able to provide all four thousand of those seats all at once. Um, and then secondarily, I I just wanna note that in the uh, board-approved um, CIP, that's in the current, like the the twenty-two feasibility study, we're recommending, um, let me scroll to the right page, cuz I moved from it to answer the other question. So in that feasibility study, we are recommending uh, three regional early childhood centers in the next eight years to be built. And then in the CIP that was prior to, that was related to this, we also have a um, regional early childhood center with a to-be-determined location as a placeholder. So we're starting to get these items sorted out and included in the uh, feasibility study and the capital budget requests.
Right.
But as Ms. Catronio noted, that's early, we're we're still at an early stage for this.
So I I did see those um, regional early childhood centers. Um, and I guess what, again, what concerns me is there is already a need for more capacity at Thomas Viaduct. Um, there's a need for more capacity at, uh, well, Bryant Woods, according to the school capacity chart, even though we had a discussion about that last year. Um, and a need for more capacity, actually, at a number of other schools. And I I'm just, I'm thinking about the testimony, the public testimony, a week ago, where we were talking about, well, we could, well, some of the council members were talking about, why don't we just build on to the schools that we have right now? And the projection, just as one example, to add on three hundred and forty seats at Centennial High School was a cost at a hundred and five to a hundred and forty million dollars. So if we're not putting these pre-K requirements into our projections right now, to allow us to also build our capital requests in a way that honestly reflects what we're going to need, then I I just don't, I don't see this as ending well. I see this as as two years from now, the school district coming and saying, oh, we finally figured out what the formula is, and we think we're gonna need capacity for two thousand five hundred pre-K students. We 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 have one spot identified right now, Faulkner Ridge, that's gonna need fifty million dollars in renovation, and we're gonna have to build four other regional early childhood centers. Ms. Catrino, you're nodding your head. What?
Well, then, a a lot of our other projects get pushed down the line, once again, and deferred further and further. And that's what happens. It becomes a competition. We can't, under current capital fiscal constraints, we can't do everything. And so it's a choice. And we need capacity, we have emergency need for capacity at the middle school level because of Thomas Viaduct and Mount and quite frankly, Mountview Middle also. Um, so now we're gonna turn, we're gonna put the capacity in the latest plan, uh, at Oaklil's Middle, which needs a renovation, so it works out. We we can renovate that school. But now we've pushed Dunlogon down again, and then this is what happens. And and, you know, with the the pre-K, that will have the same impact. There's only so much money um, to to fund these projects. And so those are the choices that we have to make. So yes, I agree with you. We're really gonna need to um, be very clear about our pre-K needs, um, and enrollment projections. We're gonna have to be very clear um, in our needs. And I believe that we should be stating what we need, um, come this fall, when we do our capital budget and our CIP, that we need to put it out there, what we need.
I agree.
And it's our schools that have been waiting since two thousand eight to be renovated um, and expand it, uh, such as Dunlogon, um, such as Oaklil's High, Oaklil's Middle.
I mean, we may not have the money for it, but I say, tell us what it is. Just put it on the line.
Oh, I will have no problem doing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Catrino. So, um, I have this chart here. I don't know if you've seen this, uh, Mr. Rogers, uh, but this is the twenty twenty-two um, open close chart that um, projects to twenty twenty-five. And this shows what which schools will be open or closed in twenty twenty-five based on the requirements of the
I'm sorry, Ms. Ms. Young, when you stand up, the um, anyone virtual may not be able to hear you as well.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll I'll push this up. Okay.
Thank you.
Um, so this is, these are the schools that we that will be open or closed in twenty twenty-five based on the requirements of the adequate public facilities ordinance. And the capacity tests, of course, elementary school at a hundred and five percent, middle at one ten, and high school at one fifteen. The darkest color on this chart are all the schools that are constrained. At least one of the schools fails the APFO test in that area. And the next darkest red are all the schools in the area that are over one hundred percent capacity. So that area shows over one hundred percent capacity. That doesn't mean that they're closed, but it does mean that they're over one hundred percent capacity. The next one, the orange, is two-thirds of the schools are over one hundred percent capacity. And the light orange is one-third of the schools are over one hundred percent capacity. So um, so Mr. Youngman, that's you. You have the least crowded schools in uh, in Howard County.
Well.
The lightest orange.
No, I mean, that's two districts, but in the great center of the county and you guys' districts, there's two school districts open.
Yeah, uh, well, they're they're not open. It's one-third of the schools
Yeah.
are over one hundred percent capacity. So some of the schools are
Yeah.
closed still. Yes. So um, it seems to me that what this means is that finding good solutions here to our open close chart is going to be very challenging. Um, I'm not sure how we are going to actually do this, especially um, with our general plan coming up. But I do think that the important thing here is to ensure that we have the best information possible, Mr. Rogers, that we have everything that we need um, at our fingertips, including the most accurate, up-to-date information. And I certainly agree with Mr. Youngman here, that having up-to-date information is, the most up-to-date information is the most useful. And having everything projected, um, including the pre-K uh, capacity is useful. Having all of our building needs, that's useful, because getting them at two years from now and uh, saying, oh, our new capital requirements are five hundred million dollars, that's not useful. We we need to really start planning, um, and putting money aside to make sure that we're going to be able to um, to satisfy the needs of this school district. And then the last question I guess I have for you, Mr. Rogers, is um, there was some discussion in the in the report that we received about the projections for the future. And I'm wondering if you're if the school district is still thinking that there won't be as many students returning to the school district as you believed would be returning over the last two years? If you think that the percentage of students going returning will be going up this year?
Uh, that's a great question. And if I I I wish that um, you know, this position came with, and not not to be smart about it, but I wish this position came with a crystal ball that I could pull out of my desk drawer and
That would be awesome.
And no, for sure. Yeah, I know. Um, so what we think is happening at this point is that the the two years of of declined enrollment or depressed enrollment due to COVID uh, circumstances is is kind of a new starting point for us. So we do anticipate that as COVID eases, the restrictions ease, the economy uh, at some point returns to um, something close to what it was before COVID, um, that we will begin uh, recovering some enrollment. I don't know that we're going to get um, you know, a thousand of those kids that that withdrew or delayed entry back all at once. Um, but I do think that we're going to be resuming um, something similar to the trends of growth that we saw prior to COVID, um, growing off of this new lower starting point. Um, but there are a couple of factors that that are going to influence the rate of growth as we go forward. One of them, Mr. Brownout talked about earlier with regard to um, there just being limited development opportunities in the county, and acknowledged that that will change and that that may look different once the new general plan is implemented. Uh, and then additionally, uh, there's one trend that we've seen that's influenced our projection in recent years, um, that really, uh, we have the data and we have a handle on now, a better handle on now. And that's the fact that nationwide, um, the rates of births have been declining uh, over the last five to six years. And that trend has been impacting Maryland school enrollment and also Howard County school enrollment. So this projection um, is the first projection that we presented, uh, actually, the the projection that's in the feasibility study this year is the first projection that we presented that really responds to that five-year trend now of declining births. And you'll see that start to hit elementary schools in the coming years as those birth cohorts um, that are smaller than the previous year's birth cohorts begin arriving in kindergarten.
Well, that may take place in Maryland, but given the Supreme Court discuss decision on Friday, I don't know that that will continue to be a nationwide trend.
Can I add just one? I'm sorry, were you done?
No, yeah, go ahead.
I think, you know, overall, yes, we've seen the enrollment drops, but I think there are schools that are still hotspots. Despite COVID, despite all of that, their enrollment has grown, and that's Thomas Viaduct, Mountview Middle, um, Bello Springs, where we have um, some of our fastest-growing developments like Blue Stream, Oxford Square. Those developments still continue to um, really impact the enrollment at their local schools. So I think we really, rather than looking countywide, we've really gotta look for these hotspots and these trends. And um, even during the school year, I think Bello Springs had seventy students enroll since the beginning of the school year.
Ooh.
Which is crazy. Um, so look, just looking from September to May, you can kind of see what's gonna happen in the fall, really. Um, although, you know, a lot of people don't start, they they move or whatever over the summer. But I think we really have to look at these hotspots and follow them, and especially with Mountview and the schools up there, because it's Turf Valley, and Turf Valley doesn't have APFO, um, keeping it um, somewhat under control. So um, just uh, or to to really look at these hotspots and these trends, and and that's what we'll be doing on the school side.
Well, and you mentioned, I think, earlier that we we need to examine this almost on a development-by-development basis to see where these students are coming from in much greater numbers than are predicted overall. If what is predicted overall is point two students coming from an apartment out of three hundred apartments, but in Oxford Square, it's two kids per apartment coming out of apartment. Then we need to change that model and not predict that point two kids is are will be coming out of
Agreed. And I think we do that to a certain extent. I know our Office of School Planning does that, and they look at garden type and high rises, big differences, and also how many bedrooms. And remember, Oxford Square also has townhouses, and that's that's like Blue Stream also, these the CAC-zoned communities that have, and even, well, TOD, they're, that's TOD, Oxford Square, but um, having those mixed types, the the single-family attached really impact those numbers from those developments, not just apartments.
All right. Ms. Walsh, do you wanna um, take on from here?
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Catrino, for making that point. That was exactly what um, that I was gonna say, is that I I know as a system that we have to approach this on a system-wide basis, but when we get it wrong on in a given school, and that then that, you know, that's those kids in those schools that that suffer the consequences of of whatever oversight or our bad projection, however limited it was. It it has role role consequences to those families um, that either get sent to the overcrowded school or get put on a bus and get bused further away from where they live, and maybe even where their siblings went to school. It has role role consequences. And I again, it couldn't be more obvious to me right now than in Elkridge, along that Route One Quarter, where Thomas Viaduct went, is it our newest, right, Ms. Catrino, our newest middle school?
It's our newest, yes, two thousand fourteen it was built.
Trailers?
We have three trailers.
And I see the Elkridge, I I mean, again, I unless we start this conversation with the understanding that we're doing something wrong and we need to fix it, like, I don't, I don't even know how to have this conversation anymore, where something is going wrong. I have a list of projects in the queue, and it lists the Roberts property, which is now called the Elms at Elkridge, cuz that sounds very cool, or a hundred, three hundred units going to Thomas Viaduct. Like, what what this doesn't work. And the notion that we're 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 keying it to our capital project, our feasibility studies, also doesn't work, because that assumes we're gonna build them, and we're gonna build them in that order that they're listed in that document on that day. And that document changes at least quarterly. We have this conversation in the budget conversations about the school capital projects. I mean, you, I feel like we just illustrated it. The conversation and work session a month ago was, where is the pre-K facility? None, there's none in the budget that we just approved on May twenty-fifth, and now there are three or four, or one regional and many. But but we, so, Mr. Youngman, in answer to your question, no way we can use those feasibility and those capital projections to figure out where kids are gonna be that we need to teach in the schools that we have in place right now. I think our focus should be on making sure our projections are right, tracking these developments as they come in, and knowing the real impact of them. Ms. Young, use the word honest, the honest impact of them. And then We can use the word honest, the honest impact of them, and then planning accordingly. I mean, we're all supposed to be planners, right? That's what we do. But I look at that list, you know, that, and I didn't appreciate the schools did it for us, the difference between what we projected in June, for June 2022, '23 versus what the actuals are, and we did it, we have it for elementary school, middle school, and high school, we were off by more than, what, 1,100 elementary school kids? And I can see us patting ourselves on the back, oh, that's only 4%. That's 1,100 kids that we missed in our count. And then, you know, there are big swings between schools where it doesn't have a lot of impact in some, and it has a huge one in others. I don't know if Mr. Youngman and I want to do it for the same reasons, but I very much think that we should reassess that school's chart in the fall. And I think we need to do that for two reasons, which is I don't understand why we're using 2021 data for something that we're approving now. I absolutely don't understand why we're using a feasibility study that is in the most kind, unkind adjective, magical, in terms of what it's actually projecting and what we'll obtain in the next one, two, or 10 years. I mean, as you go further out, more and more magical. But right now, in the circumstance of High School 13, you can see the consequence of this. We have four scenarios, A, B, C, and D, where depending on which of those actually gets put in place for redistricting those high school kids, it will affect where, you know, where we do and don't have so-called capacity, you know, four different ways. So what, which of those four A, B, C, D scenarios is reflected in this chart that we're supposed to, not in two weeks, but until this year, I think. I think we absolutely have to go back and revisit this in fall with the most recent data, with 2022, or 20, you know, the 2022 certified data from the state, right, the State Department of Education will say, we agree, these are how many kids are in your schools right now. We can work on doing better in terms of projecting by development, how many we anticipate will be there. I feel like I heard two different answers of how we're projecting for our pre-Ks, depending on whether it's mandated pre-K curving stuff or just the cohorts that Mr. Youngman started this conversation about. But how, like, can someone address even how A, B, and C, D scenarios for High School 13 redistricting is reflected in this chart that's before the council now is CR 100?
It's not because none of those scenarios are adopted. So we can't, we can't assign students there, we can't project enrollment for a school that doesn't have a boundary. And this, again, this chart, according to the process that has been in place, and I'm not saying that it has to be that way going forward, but the process that has been in place places the school capacity chart at the end of the annual planning cycle so that it includes projections that have had a chance to inform a capital planning process resulting in an approved capital budget. So if that timing needs to change and the county council wants to request different timing for that, I mean, you know, I'm not going to fall on my sword, so to speak, over keeping the current process the way that it is in perpetuity. But I also want to respond to the projection questions. You know, there's not, there's not a, all of the new units, all of the units that DPZ estimates could be built in the county are included in our projection, and we're estimating student yield from those units based on that type of unit, the yield from that type of unit in that school boundary over the last five years. So it's not a perfect system, but breaking it down by development would give us smaller sample sizes, which statistically could result in less accuracy. And then finally, on the recent projection accuracy items, you know, the last two projections have been impacted by COVID. There were circumstances there that no one predicted. And we, you know, the projection that's behind the school capacity chart that's before you now was driven by a projection that assumed, according to, you know, industry-best thinking, that the students who withdrew or delayed entry would come back in the previous school year when the masking restrictions and other restrictions changed. And that just didn't happen. So typically, our enrollment projection at the countywide level is 99.6% accurate. And what we've, what we're using this year in this year's feasibility study, we provided this projection to State Department of Education, like we do every year, and our countywide projection tracks with their countywide projection over the next 10 years within 2%. So they don't project at the school level, they only project countywide, so that's the only number we have to benchmark against. So I would just offer that projection in this year's feasibility study and the projection in last year's feasibility study compared similarly to the statewide projection, the MSDE project. So with regards to the accuracy, it's the last two years, it hasn't been what we usually have, that doesn't reflect the standard that we usually hold our enrollment projection to accuracy-wise. But I think once these, but it does track with MDP's projections, and I think once these COVID-related concerns start to ease and we're able to get back to something that looks like, life that looks like it did prior to COVID, some of the trends that we saw then will continue, will resume.
All right, thank you. Ms. Brenner, I expect for your input on this question, and maybe I'll let her comment. So would the school system think that a good time, we have the most reliable data to generate a chart like this, you know, that would be the most timely as it was approached and voted on by the council? Is it fall? Is it, I mean, what's the input that we're waiting for that makes, you know, a particular calendar time more or less appropriate?
Well, in terms of using the best projection, you know, I don't know how accurate a projection is until I get to that point in time that's being projected and I can see that, you know, the enrollment that we estimated is actually coming to fruition. So, you know, we're talking about a test year that's four years in the future, so we're using a later year of our projection. And there are a couple of things that are kind of locked in, you know, we, our enrollment isn't certified by the State Department of Education until mid-November, so that's out of our control. I don't, I can't make that any faster or on a different timeline. We're able to get the housing data from DPZ in a timely fashion. Jeff's office has been doing a great job working with us on that and getting that to us as quickly as they can. We currently get that in December. I think it was even early December this year, so that was great. And then we present a projection to the Board of Ed and the community in each year's feasibility study, which is currently scheduled for early June. It's typically the first board meeting in June. So those are the kind of the milestones of the process that we are working with. And, you know, I would suggest we could do, you know, whatever the, if the county council wants to ask, request of the board to provide the count, the chart required at a certain point in time or incorporating certain data sets, you know, I would say that earlier in the spring would be, we could do that, it would be according to the same data, using the same data that we have, that we're bringing you now just earlier in the calendar, so it will be closer to the points in time where that projection was generated. It would be prior to the feasibility study, so there wouldn't be a competing data set in terms of a projection that's out there. And the only caveat would be that it would be prior, you would be getting it prior to the approval of the capital budget. So if anything were to change between board-requested and approved capital budget, that change wouldn't be incorporated into the chart. Those changes are, my understanding, those changes are not frequent. And then if it were to be in the fall, like you just suggested, Ms. Walsh, I would think, you know, we would have a projection from the feasibility study, we would have the capacities from the feasibility study and from the approved capital budget. It will be too early in the next capital budget cycle, I would think, to use the capital planning that would be informed by that feasibility study. So we would be using, you know, what's approved, it just might not reflect recommendations from the feasibility study that's presented in June. So it could be different times, it's just that, you know, it would be different considerations in terms of the recency and points in the capital planning process.
And there have been times in the past where the open-close or the school capacity chart was adopted a second time in a year, so that's another option. Ms. Walsh, it was a very good point regarding the high schools. So once the high school redistricting is completed, I think in mid-November, there's nothing precluding the county council for adopting a new school capacity chart that incorporates that redistricting.
So we'd incorporate it from the, yeah, Jeff, that's a good point, it would incorporate it from the projection level because we will be able to project, we will be able to include the estimated enrollment at each school from the boundary changes. And then over the following year, we would be able to incorporate, you know, as we generate a new full projection that spring to present in the feasibility study, we would have the ability to consider that updated projection in the analysis of capital planning, which would be, you know, the next annual cycle.
Right. Yeah, the previous councils have adopted, whenever there's a big event change, like a redistricting, which doesn't happen all that often, I do recall new school capacity charts being adopted by the county council to reflect that change rather than waiting, you know, for the full year to pass before a new chart was adopted.
I think that's right.
The board will approve the redistricting on November 17th, and I'm not sure where that will line up with the official enrollment being certified by MSDE, but it could certainly be taken into consideration for that timing. There is unofficial enrollment ready after September 30th, but if you want certified, it's mid-November from MSDE.
All right, thank you. And Ms. Katronia, so you said, sorry, you said November 17th, is that right?
Yes, my last board meeting. Then I will go dark after that, the redistricting decision.
You'll go to like a.
Totally dark on social media.
Sensory deprivation chamber, you can just sit in silence.
Thursday, November 17th is the final vote.
Okay, so that means that the council wouldn't be able to take it up until January because of our schedule in this weird year. A couple of my questions, Mr. Rogers, are sort of going back to things you'd said, so I think I want to just sort through some of those. The, you meant, someone mentioned centennial, and I wasn't sure if that was also a renovation or just an addition.
It's a renovation.
It's a renovation and addition.
Okay, yeah, I was hoping with that cost that it would include both, so that's great news. And then the other piece was, kind of going back to what Ms. Walsh had touched on, it is helpful to know both numbers in terms of where we got the projections. We have 4% on the overall system, but then you look at those specific schools, and there are big swings at certain schools, and that makes it really hard for us to adopt these charts that sort of pace and direct the growth when we don't have that sort of lower-level detail number. It feels like we're always, you know, chasing our tail, trying to catch up because we don't have those numbers, but I guess that kind of gets back to your crystal ball aspect that we don't have the numbers until the numbers exist. So it just really feels like we should all be able to get it better than we currently are able to, and I think we're all frustrated because we're all people who want to do well, we like doing well, and it, this is like a Rubik's Cube of legislation that we never quite get. When, and so on page 30, I think you touched on this a bit with Ms. Walsh as well. So basically, the 2031, because we get questions from people who see these and then reach out to us, 2031 is if we did nothing at all. If nothing was redistricted, nothing was built, the physical environment is as it is and students go where they go, and that's what would happen over time. Is that fair to say?
I'm sorry, the 2031 number?
On page 30, on your feasibility study?
Yeah.
I know, yeah, I think it is. That's like, that's the elementary school, but yes. So, I mean, for any of these, 36, 30? They would be if no new schools were built, if no one was redistricted, that's what the existing sort of system would look like in 2031.
Correct, because without a boundary for a new school, we can't really adjust adjacent schools' capacity utilizations because we don't know how many of those students might be reassigned to the new school. So, right, those are not included here.
Because then the challenge is then people see that and they think, this is terrible. And then you have to go and explain, well, we have plans for Elementary School 43, and we are expanding Talbot Springs Elementary School. And you have to walk them through all these scenarios, and it does create a bit of alarm in the community, I think, at times because they don't know that that's kind of what that chart means.
Okay.
And then I guess the other piece, I'm going to ask you a question that's 100% unfair because neither you or I were here when this decision was made. And I'm, Ms. Katronia, you're going to have to, I can't remember if you were on the board or not at this time, but it's about the milk producers, Wellington Farms. You know, the community asked, the councilwoman at the time asked, you know, we were all asking the school system to take a reservation of that land because we knew that there was a shortage for middle schools and elementary schools. And no action was taken to reserve a portion of Wellington Farms. And the same thing with, I think it's Taylor something or other up by Ms. Walsh for middle school. You know, we're not, you have an opportunity in our code, and, you know, we're not able to pursue it for these properties, and this is six years ago, we have people saying, we need to reserve a portion of this land, and now it's not reserved. Single-family detached homes are going in, you know, single-family detached are going in, which kind of function because of new construction and the way it works in our county. There, it seems like they're starting to function almost like new single-family detached. And we don't have the land, and I see all these sort of, we have a crunch now for our southeastern middle schools. So, so how can our, give, you know, it's not a crystal ball, but if you kind of look back, what could be done better? You know, how do we stop making these same mistakes? How can these bodies, how can we all here who are here today make these better choices that, you know, don't mean that we have to go back and fix things? How can we help the next people sitting in our seats? Is really my question, I think.
Mr. Rogers, do you want to go?
Well, that's, that's a, that's a really, I mean, you've summarized the challenge of this whole, this whole process. And, you know, I think there are a lot of competing, and there's many factors here in terms of land reservation, you know, as Mr. Brenner mentioned earlier, that, you know, the pattern and pace of development is changing in the county, so the opportunities to reserve school sites may be dwindling, to be honest. And I don't know if Wellington Farms is past the point where we can look at a school reservation there, and I don't know if Taylor Highlands is past that point either, but that's, Taylor Highlands is something that's been on our radar in terms of asking those questions and considering that. I'll mention that in the southeast, from the elementary school side, we do have, we do still have the opportunity to look at an elementary school at the Mission Road site next to High School 13, and we do have two other land bank elementary school sites in eastern Columbia slash southeast portion of the county. So there may be, there are elementary school options.
Yeah.
In that area. Middle school is more challenging, it's a bigger site footprint requirement. So that's something that, you know, is coming up that we're going to have to deal with. Like you said, if Wellington Farms is past that point, then we start changing the conversation to talk about which schools we can add on to, or are there other places that we can acquire land in that area to look at the middle school crowding issue? But this is, this is one that is, just started influencing our projection. So it's something that our team will be looking into, what the solutions will be there in that southeast middle school scenario. And then overall, you know, Ms. Rigby, I don't, this is something we're going to have to, both bodies and staff are going to have to continue working on and talking about. You know, the county's been managing growth and trying to phase school improvements with projected growth the same way for a number of years, and as Mr. Brenner and Ms. Gallon mentioned. um, again, that, you know, the county's development pattern is changing. We're not growing, the county's not growing like it was in the nineties and early two thousands. So, that probably means that the tools need to be re, need, need to be looked at again. Um, and with the general plan, um, the AFo review following that, and the land use plan, uh, that comes out of it, I, you know, it seems to me that those are, uh, prime opportunities to reconsider some of these tools.
Thank you, and I think to almost a, a flip side of that, you've got schools like Cradle Rock or Assleton Elementary where no new development has occurred. If anything, we're really pursuing or residents are hoping to pursue redevelopment, but now their schools are constrained because I'm as, I'm going to assume it's because of resales, because if there's been no new development, then that can't be the cause, but, um... But yeah, no, I mean, I don't think it's redistricting, Mr. Youngman, not, no, because it, Cradle Rock was over capacity three years ago, and every home there is built in the seventies.
Moving in and out.
Yeah, it's, it's that turnover aspect.
It's the big turnover, it's probably the second, the, the third generation of those.
Right, I'm just saying that the same tool applied across the whole county does not, i- it's like all we have is a hammer, and we're just using it on different places, but it's not the right tool for every place. And so, I don't want to go down to the development by development, because I think you're right, statistically, we're going to get very off-kilter here, but, but how can we refine our tools so that way they're, they're really working for each community?
If I'm, if I may, I know that, um, milk producers, it did pre, pre, predecease, I was going to say predecease, preceded me, um, but I do believe that the fact that the Mission Road site was acquired by the school system with the county, um, that parlayed into that, um, as, because it was even, there was even talk of it being middle school property also. Um, I think the Patuxent Valley Middle School had an addition, and that was supposed to provide relief, and that is, they, they're, you know...
But even after those two things, we were still talking about whether or not we needed to, like, combining Lake Elkhorn and, um, Cradle Rock into a, which I don't think would be a great choice for that community, um, and then you also have the Hammond Elementary, Hammond Middle combined campus. Um, but it's, it's just...
And Cradle Rock is, there's a lot of apartments that feed into Cradle Rock, and that's always really hard for us to predict, and I think that's been, um, you know, like I said, it depends on the community, the apartment community.
Well, there's not that many, there's just, there's not a ton compared. That is a primarily a single-family detached, and they have some duplexes, but there's just really quiet hours apartments that are not fifty-five plus.
Cradle Rock has been just consistently over capacity, um,
Yeah.
for, for years. Um...
And they're garden apartments, too. They're only three-story walk-up.
But I know the Taylor Village, I have inquired about reserving land for that. That's going to be very impactful in the northern part where there is absolutely no capacity. Middle school is quite the challenge. We have not built middle school capacity since the Patuxent Valley, um, addition, and then before that, the, um, the new middle school.
Right.
And we are, almost every middle school is at capacity or over capacity, and without relief coming on board until, um, Dunlogon, um, addition comes on board, hopefully.
Well, and you said, did you mention Oaklawn Mills?
And Oaklawn Mills Middle, that's been wavering back and forth because we could, we need to do both.
Right, well, you have northern, northern issues and central, yeah.
Because Dunlogon is not over capacity, but Patapsco is, is very over capacity, and so that's going to be the relief, and it would be relief for Mountain View Middle, but, um, I, I have the, the northern part of the community with Elegant Mills, I mean, we're constantly redistricting that school out of trouble. Um, and so, um, with Taylor Village, that's going to be a real concern, um, with that community coming on board, so I have made inquiry with our office about reserving land at Taylor Village. I think we are too far gone at Wellington, um, the Woods of Wellington.
They are phasing, so I don't know if the phasing gives an opportunity or not.
Phase four has been approved, I mean, it's, I think all of their phasing has been approved.
Okay.
Um, it's just not, it's coming through the, the site development process.
Yeah, I think they're, well, I know the administration was trying to get them to go slower as a way to slow down the impacts on the schools. Um, when it comes to schools like, um, Oaklawn Mills High School, Ms. Katronio, is there talk of doing a renovation and significant expansion there? Um, instead of, like, almost before you rebuild an entirely new school of High School fourteen, can we invest and expand at this school that's in the heart of Howard County?
Yeah, that's on the, I think, the, the CIP of like twelve, twenty thirty, but definitely an expansion and a renovation.
Okay.
I think it's, um, before High School fourteen is on, is not even on our list anymore for the CIP. I think Oaklawn Mills High School, and then in twenty thirty-one, Centennial High School, both schools have been waiting since about two thousand eight for renovations.
Well, because Centennial and Hammond are sister buildings.
Yes.
Um, but on the plus side, I guess you already have the design and prototype for that in a lot of ways, so, trying to look for the silver lining. Um, great, well then, let's, um, switch to our, our last round of five. Mr. Youngman?
Thanks. I, I, I think we've delved into a lot of detail. Um, but back to kind of the higher level, you know, we've been here three-plus years, um, we've talked about it many times. Um, I mean, the school system still talks about capacity and school construction like it did in the nineteen nineties. You know, we need big parcels, more geo-bond funding, we build small schools, and until we get land and money, everyone can live with either, you know, overcrowded schools or battles about growth. What new tools has the school system devised, pursued? What are they pursuing to create capacity and deal with? You know, the, just the overall capital needs other than simply we need more money, and until you can get us more money, everybody's got to suck it up?
Well, I know the board motioned a few weeks ago to have our Office of School Plan or School Construction, um, revisit our prototypes and our requirements so that we can stop living in la-la land, thinking that we're going to get fifty acres for a high school, so, um, that, that is in process, and I don't know if Mr. Rogers can speak to, both of our Office of School Construction, um, people are on vacation, unfortunately. Um, but Mr. Rogers, do you have any information on that?
On, on that specific item, uh, I do not.
Yeah, we haven't heard, like, we, this was a couple of weeks ago, so it's, it's formalized this process so that we can do that, we can be more flexible, um, and, and you, and work within the constraints that we're facing now, um, with additions and, and new construction and partnerships.
Great. Um, I'd be remiss if I didn't look at the feasibility study, and again, ring alarm bells about, um, the northeast region. The northeast region, on this open-close chart, is now the most overcrowded region projected, yet we have now bumped to Elementary School forty-four instead of forty-three, and I haven't heard the rumors recently, but I know at one point in time, over the last two years, there was thought it might get bumped again to forty-five. Um, I just, I, I know we only have Ms. Katronio here from the Board of Ed, but Board of Ed, if you're listening, that school better not get pushed out again.
And you mean the northern part, not the northeast?
Northern, northern, yeah, I, I can barely read without my glasses on, these things are so small. I mean, you're talking five, and, and I think it, it's not just the region, you look at the schools surrounding each region, how close they are and what situation they're in, and there is no bailout place for Waverly Elementary School. There is no bailout place for Manor Woods that might be, you know, like, just, and, and St. John's, that might be just over the line into a different region but has capacity. There's just no, nowhere to go there unless you start, you know, you know, transporting kids from, you know, that district out to Lisbon. It's just cost prohibitive, it's just not going to work, so, um, that's all I have. Thanks.
Ms. Walsh?
I'm going to happily use my last five minutes to hear what, what, um, what DPC and schools planning and Ms. Katronio before November seventeenth thinks that, that is the, the right next step for this council, right? At, we are slated to approve this list in this form or some amended form on July fifth. Uh, I hear my takeaways are, I probably am going to try and make a real strong case that we come back and fall after we see what, um, what comes out of the High School thirteen, redistricting, and school enrollment, you know, certified or not in, in the new school year. Uh, I will be following up. I assure you, Ms. Brunau, uh, Ms., Ms. Gallon, with, with you about reservation of, uh, land as part of Taylor Highlands, same with you, Mr. Rogers, uh, you know, that, that sounds like solutions. Um, but if, if there are other, D one has been at the forefront of trying to extend that so-called waiting period because we're calling it an open-close school chart, but they're not open or closed, they just, um, temporarily delay that new development, and I keep, I, I, and I admit it, all those pages and pages of documents that, that we've received , um, from the auditor's office since the public hearing, my eyes can't read past Elms at Elk Ridge, three hundred and three units feeding into Thomas Fyde Duck. I can't, I can't read anything else other than that because it seems like such a complete fail, like, and, and that's, you know, we say, we see it coming for so long, and still we don't, we don't have the tools to address it, so a, any other solutions that you see that we as a legislative body, either alone or in, um, in partnership with, with schools and, and DPC and the administration, what, what more can be done to, in the near term, um, turn around what, what we've been doing and, and get closer to a target in delivering actual school seats for the children where they are?
Ms. Walsh, I do agree that, looking at the timing and, and updating this chart and, and coming back with that, we do have a joint meeting in July, um, and this is on the agenda, and I, I would suggest that we, um, I don't want to delay, but so that we have a full spectrum of people here to weigh in, uh, um, rather than just lonely on me and Mr. Rogers. Um, I, I think that this, this will be a, a great topic for then. I, I hear you with the Robert, with the Elms at Elk Ridge property, um, and have talked to Mr. Rogers about it, about, like, can we adjust our own policy to allow flexibility in where that development will go? For example, to go to Oaklawn Mills Middle, and for, instead of the elementary, to go to Duckets Lane where there's plenty of capacity compared to Hanover Hills. So, the, these things are being talked about, I, I see it coming, and there's more than just the Robert, or Elms at Elk Ridge coming to Thomas Fyde Duck. There's a lot more. There's Dorsey Business Center, there's Route One, um, uh, development coming, there's all sorts of other things coming that won't be student generating like the Elms at Elk Ridge because those are purely apartments. Elms at Elk Ridge is, is, is townhouses and apartments. Um, so I do share your concern and have been looking at it, so, um, I hope I didn't, I answered you a little bit, maybe with a non-answer, but, um, the hopes that we can, um, continue this conversation at our joint co, uh, joint session in, in a couple of weeks.
That's a good point. Thank you, Ms. Katronio.
I, I can't say, um, Elms at Elk Ridge is currently in the school capacity bin, so it's going to fail again this year.
Yeah. We have some time.
This doesn't address your question directly, but I'm just putting some, some information out there. So, right now, there's eight hundred and thirty housing units that have been approved that are on hold in the school capacity bin. When this chart gets adopted, or, or if it gets adopt, the resolution gets adopted and voted by the county council, a hundred and fifty-two of those units will get out. So, eighteen percent will get out, and the remaining will remain on hold, given the current school situation, so, you know, AFo clearly isn't perfect, but all of these projects will remain on hold, um, for up to four years, given the current situation as, as AFo is, you know, intending to work.
Yes, and certainly redistricting some of them to, uh, under capacity will advance it, so that's, we have to be very careful.
Yes, so the redistricting will help, and then the new, you know, the new construction, new High School fourteen, all of that, of course, yes.
I would just add, I think in terms of, um, maybe reconsidering the open-close school chart in, you know, this, December timeframe, when you have the redistricting completed, you have the enrollment certified, and you have our development, um, most recent development data, um, the, um, I think we wouldn't have any objection to that. I think that, that, you know, that's probably an exercise worth doing, um, especially in light of the fact it is going to be a large redistricting this year, and that there's precedent for it in the years past, so if you wanted to, um, consider something like that, I think, you know, we would, we would support something like that.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Young?
So, um, just a couple of observations and a question. Um, I was really pleased to see on page nine of this report that there was a separate column here now for potential solutions, which I believe might be thanks to the legislation that the council passed in which we asked the school district to propose, um, specific potential solutions to school overcrowding, and, um, it looks as if, uh, most of the potential solutions were, uh, for new elementary schools or boundary reviews. One was for, or a couple were for additions. Um, but the only one that, other than boundary reviews, I thought the only one that's realistic in the next two or three years is the opening of High School thirteen. So, I was glad that you put that in there, but, um, I noticed that under Clemens Crossing, uh, which is a school in my district, it says future new elementary school outside of long-range master plan. So, that means that the poor little elementary school, which was at one point elementary school number forty-three or forty-four or forty-five, is now listed for a Western Columbia Elementary School in twenty thirty-three, I think, or, which is a long time out. Ms. Katronio, you look like you're ready to respond.
If we had more capital funding, we would.
Okay.
I mean, it comes down to being realistic, and we, if we put everything we needed, it would probably depress everybody here, um, because we haven't had new capacity built. I mean, we have a lot coming on board next year and the year after, but we've gone three or four years without any new capacity, and after the, after High School thirteen is built, and Hammond and Talbot Springs replacement, we'll go another few years without any capacity, and, you know, I hate to say it, but COVID did, was a good one because it helped us, it gave us some time to sort of catch up, but we don't have the capacity coming on board that we need. We, if we could build, if we had the money, um, the capital funding to support these projects, we would absolutely advance them. We would have, you know, these deferred maintenance projects where they should be many years ago, actually. Turf Valley, we started talking maybe fifteen years ago about a school, um, in the northern part, so we, Mr. Youngman, I hear you. Um, Turf Valley is desperately needed, but so is an elementary school in the southeast, and it becomes, um, unfortunately, becomes communities against each other, trying to vie for limited resources, and we're sort of in the, put in the middle of it. And the school system and in the Board of Education, we don't want to say no, we don't want to defer any more projects, and we don't want to have to make the choice to do that, but we have to, because we, we have to live within our, our, the fiscal constraints from both the county and the state. Um, you know, there's, there's been, uh, legislation to increase the amount of funding available, we have to match it. Um, we still have to come up with that, that funding, uh, so, we hear you, we want to advance these projects. Um, hopefully, the, um, the stalling of the enrollment has given us a little bit of a break so that we can catch up on, and it has. We've been able to catch up on, and thankfully, very thankful to the council for allowing some of our capital projects to go forward, to renovate our buildings, and, and especially when it comes to health and safety, um, of the air quality of our buildings, so personally, I'm very thankful for that. But, you know, there's a long list because we have grown a lot, um, and have had to build capacity and push off systemic renovation projects. Now I'm on my soapbox, so I'm going to step off.
Well, I thank you, Ms. Katronio. I, I love it when you get on your soapbox. We all have to get there once in a while. So, the, just a quick question, so forty-three is now an elementary school in the southeast part of the county?
Yes, it's the southeast, and then, right now, and then forty-four is Turf Valley.
Okay.
And then, um, yeah, that's, that's the definite, along with High School thirteen and, and Hammond and Talbot Springs, thankful for those projects.
Okay, and then just one other question, actually, um, uh, to our county auditors, um, and to Mr. Martin, um, you did an, uh, an analysis of whether or not these new students, I guess, would, whether or not the taxes, um, based on what we have learned from, uh, Mr. Brunau and the school district, whether or not these students, the taxes generated by these new developments would pay for the students um, who would be, are projected to attend our, our schools. Um, did you include, uh, the cost of building new schools or additions? You did not. Okay. All right, thanks. That's it for me.
All right.
I guess a clarifying question.
Absolutely.
When we talked about revisiting...
When we talked about revisiting, um, revisiting in, we talked about fall, but you're right, I think it would be January, we're not talking about not passing this one. We're, we're talking about taking action on this one, which I think we're required to do.
My assumption was we were going to take action on this one with amendments or wherever we may be, but take action and then take action again when we have updated numbers, actual enrollment and.
Right. So we would look at it, and I don't know, and I don't know that that's a bad thing for us to adopt, to do it twice a year anyway. I mean, because you're just always.
Oh, there Tiger, let's do one year and then see.
Yeah, it should just always be, we should always be operating with the best information we have. And, you know, if, if we need to do it in the summer and then we need to do it in January to do that, then, okay, I just wanted to make sure.
No, I think the one thing that is very clear that everybody here, here and on this call in general agrees is that there is a better way. We can do this, we can get to a better place.
I mean, maybe consider that this is a living document. But it's not, it's a moment, it's not a moment in time. It's, it's a living document and treated as such.
I think that probably the timing of it, it, I think the tough thing would be if a school was open on this chart and then we closed it in January, I think there you're going to get into a situation where somebody, um, purchased property or was pursuing a project, knowing that they had until X date to take their first APFO test. Like, I think there's going to be an issue tying into when you have to take the tests. So that we'll have to look at that. But again, back to the chart itself, it's silly to have schools open or closed based on information that's a year old if the current information would, would do the opposite. So.
I did have, actually.
All right. A final question for Ms. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Walsh, if you have one, just let me know.
Um, I forgot to ask you, um, Mr. Rogers, about the school board's decision that lowered elementary classrooms by one student, um, whether that will have an overall impact on school capacity levels?
Uh, it, it won't change the calculation because the formulas are adopted based on static, um, uh, student to teacher or student to classroom ratios from the time, the last time that each level's capacity methodologies were reviewed. So that would be, uh, 2014 for elementary schools, I think, 2013 for middle schools and somewhere around 2010 for high schools. Again, all, you know, prior to my time in this position, but, um, yeah, those, those methodologies are static, uh, you know, so while there might be changes, uh, on a per classroom basis in terms of day-to-day number of students in those rooms, the capacity calculations will remain the same.
So if you could, if I could just tease that out a little bit. So let's say you have 22, the maximum number of students are, that are allowed in a first grade classroom is 22. Previously it was 23. So now, um, with the, um, reduction in the one student, that doesn't change the square footage that is needed in a, in a classroom to handle the students? I guess I'm, I'm trying to think of a real life example, like how, how does this actually operate?
So they're, they're allowing, it's my understanding this change will, uh, in, uh, increase, allow an increase in, or do we decrease? I think we decrease, right?
Decrease, decrease by one at the elementary.
Right. So, right. Um, so like you said, in, in, so our, our capacity calculation in middle school or at elementary school right now is based on, um, 22 students per kindergarten classroom, 19 per first and second, and 25 for third through fifth. And, uh, those were the rates that were in place again when the elementary capacity methodology was reviewed a few years ago. And so while there may be, uh, fewer students in each class, which could, in some circumstances, lead to additional, um, classes or additional, yeah, additional classes for a given grade in a given school based on where they fall, um, on the, um, the maximum allowable, um, I forget what the term is they use, but the maximum allowable per classroom. Um, again, that won't change the capacity rating for the school because that's based on a, a static methodology that should be reviewed periodically, um, but it's tied to what was approved back in, in 2013 or 14 for the elementary schools.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
All right. Well, thank you all for the discussion today. Um, hopeful every year that we get a little bit closer to, um, to agreement for everyone. So, thank you all, um, and we will see you next time. Take care.